Three, you can all rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you everyone. Just to remind people watching from home, we are cutting this school board meeting short, so we're just gonna go through a few things, hoping to be done by 6:45 to head down to the theater for the deliberative which starts at 7:00. Alright, so correspondence.
Just a couple of things in the folder tonight that I wanted to share with the board. The first of which is a wonderful online curriculum overview document that Mrs. Lamson has put out. And so this is, just to help teachers with school logi implementation, so I wanted to continue to share with the board some of the great things that are happening. We've got a picture here from Maple Ave that they did a special positive reinforcement where recognition tickets were given as part of the Second Step program, which is our social-emotional learning platform. And you can see here that kids had a ton of recognition tickets, which was really nice. And the last thing was, we received notification from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And we were reported out that Mountain View's accreditation has been extended, and the report letter is in there.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, accommodations, good news. Wendy, do you have anything?
I have anything.
Scott, go ahead.
I had a commendation. As you know, you saw it on social media, but we did have a burst sprinkler pipe at Maple Avenue. And Randy and his crew just responded super quickly. There was like five, six people there. Just did an unbelievable job of getting all of the water extracted so that school can be ready. But it just goes to show that sometimes things happen, and our custodial crew just did an unbelievable job, you know, getting everything back to where it needed to be. So I wanted to thank them.
Great, thank you Scott. Anyone else commendations, good news? Alright, seeing none. Public comment. Is there a public comment tonight? Alright, I'll close public comments. We're gonna approve January 24th school board meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to read them? Anybody see anything?
I'll motion to approve the January 24th, 2023 school board meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you Shane. Do I have a second? By Caroline. Further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All opposed, abstaining. One abstention. Did you get that Denise? Alright. Three reports. We're gonna do this real quick to approve it. So Scott, do you wanna go through it?
Yeah, sure, I can. You wanna do it?
Question that we just stated is $22,754,569.74.
Alright, do I have a second? By Caroline. Go ahead Dan.
We have payroll and taxes at 1.5 million, that's the most of it, sped for $10,400. Some general expenses, there were only about four of them, the normal things of $166,000. The detail will be in the minutes, but we're just doing it a bridge tonight so that we can get to the deliberative.
Great, thank you Dan. Does anybody have any questions? Alright, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. Thank you Dan.
Thank you.
Alright, Jared, was there, there's nothing to report on budget committee?
Budget committee, we have meetings potentially tonight and tomorrow if there's any change in the financial over one articles.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, so PNC has a meeting February 20th at 6:15, so that's before the next school board meeting. Policy, we have a meeting next Monday, the 13th at 5:30 at the SAU. CNE also has a meeting on February 13th at 7:00 at the SAU. And SAU Policy has a meeting February 15th at 5:30 at the SAU. So superintendent's report, go ahead Brian.
Thank you. In addition to the issue that we had at Maple Ave yesterday that Mr. Gross spoke about, I wanted to let everyone know that we had our fire vendor who was there last night doing a repair. So when Mr. Gross shared that we were lucky to be able to open school today, I think that's accurate. So everybody worked really, really hard. We were communicating throughout the night last night. We were able to get impact fire to come out and replace the, you know, the damaged part. And at the end of the day, it was okay. We also had an issue at Mountain View with our fire suppression pump running. So we're investigating that further, but that was something else that we discovered yesterday. Is down at the bottom of the hill, kind of, if you pull up to Mountain View, the baseball field is on your left, there's a little building right there, and there's a pump in there that is our fire suppression system. And we don't entirely know why it was running, but that was also another issue that we contended with. Speaking of issues, we had the manifest that you just approved, had a fire panel fix for about $23,000 at Goffstown High School. All of the fire suppression systems are very complicated, and we are, we have to make sure everything's working correctly. We received notification from the New Hampshire Education Department for indicator 13. This is a special education report that focuses on our transition elements compliance, and we received 100% compliance from the state, so we're appreciative of that. Mr. Gross finally heard back from the Department of Ed. The board will recall that there's a 54-year-old statute that focused on additional funding for area schools. And Mr. Gross has finally heard back from the department. And they indicated that there was no money available. So I think we've gotta think about what our potential next steps might be. I think Scott and I disagree with their findings, and we would probably have more to say about that, but we'll hold for now. Couple updates on snow days. So we've had a couple of snow days at this point. And Heather, I think you had wanted me to talk a little bit about this. I just wanted to share with the board again, we can calculate days or we can calculate hours. We have two choices. For hours, for the middle school and high school, it's 990 hours. Elementary, it's 945 hours. At this point, we have had a couple of snow days, and I think they have made sense. The weather has been tricky and complicated, so we'll continue to track and monitor that. Regarding the ED 306, the minimum standards, I had volunteered us to host a listening session. We have not, I have heard that we are on the list, I have not heard when it will be. But there is a side-by-side comparison that the New Hampshire School Boards Association has done. It's 137 pages to digest, there's a lot in there. But before we host the session here at the theater, we will review all of those, and it will allow us the opportunity to go and ask questions and to be part of this process. So more to come on that. I wanted to let the board know that I testified on House Bill 267. This is the criminal records check bill that we worked with Representative Alexander to file on our behalf. That bill was heard by Senate Educate, or House Education on January 18th. And on February 3rd, just this past Friday, the bill was discussed by the committee. And there was a lot of discussion. So if you're interested, you can see any of the House Education Committee discussions. This one was on February 3rd, and if you go in about 2 hours and 20 minutes, that's when they start talking about our bill. There, it was an interesting discussion. There were a lot of comments of support from both Democrats and Republicans. And the committee ultimately decided they need to do more research, and they have until the middle of March to do so. So they didn't take any action on the bill. And I do expect more discussion to continue on that. Mr. Gross is working with the YMCA on a new memorandum of understanding that will enhance some of the services that we receive. Scott, I'm not gonna share any more with that until you're finished those negotiations at this point. Everyone is, I think, aware that due to redistricting, we have a new state senator. Our state senator is Keith Murphy, and I wanted to ask the board if you would like me to reach out to him and invite him to a school board meeting at some point, and maybe hear some of his legislative priorities, et cetera. So I wanted to, it sounds like, looks like there's consensus on that, so we'll work with him to do that. And it probably makes sense for us to ask our members of the House to come the same evening, so we'll work on scheduling that. We'll see what makes sense for the schedule in terms of a calendar of when we'll have them come in, but we'll figure that out. Another report that we received from the New Hampshire Education Department is significant disproportionality analysis of discipline of students with IEPs. And we had no findings or any corrective action. Essentially, the department looks at if students with IEPs are being suspended at a higher frequency than students without IEPs. So that's something that we pay attention to. In terms of our school calendar, we've been working closely with Manchester and Bedford, as well as Lunnerdary. The board will recall that we have to align our calendars due to our students who attend the Manchester School of Technology. So we've been working with those districts, and we are looking at a start. At this point, the draft calendar that you haven't seen yet, but the draft calendar that we're working on has us starting after Labor Day. Labor Day is early this year. And something that I think is exciting is we would have three teacher workshop days before school starts. And that's something that historically we're not able to do with any frequency. The board will recall a year such as this where we had a September primary, a November general election. It starts to really quickly impact our school calendar. But next year, there is only the local March election, so we are able to have a little more flexibility. And at some point, there may or may not be a presidential primary, but we don't seem to have any more information about that. And we will put an indicator, I think I shared with the board, that we anticipate the presidential primary happening. Could be January, it could be earlier, we don't really know. But we'll have an indication, and then whenever that's announced, which I understand could be pretty late. It could be, it could be in the fall. It could be after school even starts, but we'll continue to watch that in particular. And I've got some more, but that's already a pretty long discussion, so I would, I would stop there and ask if there are any other questions that I could answer.
Okay, go ahead Ellen.
Okay, just a quick reminder, what was the bill was, we're asking for?
So there are actually two bills. There are, one that was submitted on our behalf from Representative Platte. That was a bill that Mr. Gross went and testified on. That was to increase the amount for us to be required to hold a public hearing, to increase from 5,000 to 20,000. And I think that that was well-received. Mr. Gross does a really nice job presenting. Our, the other bill was House Bill 267. And this is a bill that allows local school districts to have criminal record checks done on a more frequent basis than the state currently requires. And that would allow that to be negotiated at the local level with collective bargaining agreements. And I would say, I think Ellen, the conversation, there were a lot of people who, on the committee, members of the House, who thought that teachers have background checks every three years when they have to have their teacher recertification done. So I think that there's a lot of misinformation about this. And there seems to be broad interest from both the Democrats and the Republicans on the committee. So we'll see what happens, but based on the discussion that they had last Friday, it looks like they want to continue to research the bill a little further. They talked about possibly offering some amendments, and we'll see what happens.
Two things come to mind because I've heard things, misinformation, and that, and that's why I ask. This bill would be asking for it to be done more than every three years?
No. So, no. It would, the bill would allow local school districts to negotiate the frequency of how often criminal record checks are done with their unions. So this really is a local control-type bill. This, this is enabling legislation. It does not compel anyone to do anything, but it allows school districts who may choose to have a criminal record check done with greater frequency. So right now, I've shared with the committee, and if you want me to get into this in much detail, I can tell you exactly how many people. We have a number of individuals here who have never had criminal background checks because they were employed before the statute. And, and there, I have issues with that. So my concern is and has been that I think teachers should have, and administrators, I include myself. This includes the superintendent. I'm not asking anyone to do something that I myself wouldn't subject myself, Mrs. Kohler, all of our administrators, on the same frequency cycle. But I believe that there should be more frequent background checks done. So this bill would allow local school districts to negotiate those terms at the local level.
And who pays for it?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Ellen. Go ahead Dan.
You had mentioned something about comparing regular ed to special ed students with IEPs that we are not aware of, but it seems that would be a broad brush of comparison given that generally, we have heard that we have many students with an IEP that's behavioral-based. And you would think that behaviorable-based IEPs might skew that a bit. Do they take that into account?
You know, I don't know what they take into account at this point, Dan, but this is a report that the department has been doing for a long time. So they have, I don't believe that to be the case. So another factor that these reports look at, I can share with you, this was all public. When the community of Dunbarton was with SAU 19, we had a finding in Dunbarton that we had a disproportionate number of individuals with autism who were white. So they also look at racial data. And there's not a lot of diversity in the town of Dunbarton, so that was something that we had a finding, but I don't know that I can defend the rationale for that.
Or correct it.
Or, or correct it. Yeah, I would agree. But this is, there are a number of these reports that the department tracks and monitors, and they're all based on what's called the State Performance Plan. There are 20 indicators that all states are evaluated on, and they're all the same indicators.
Thank you.
Thanks Dan. Alright Jared?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Brian, for, for the issues that happened at Maple, are those gonna be going through a warranty claim through insurance?
Yes.
Okay, so no operating budget funds?
No, so I think we have, what do we have, about a thousand dollar deductible Scott?
It'll go through insurance, filed the claim this morning, and they'll pay everything but $1,000.
So they pay the overtime, they pay all the repairs, the cleanups, et cetera.
Thanks Jared. Ellen, I saw your handle.
But just real quick, follow-up on Dan. Children with IEPs that are primarily behavior-based, have various services and supports and requirements of the districts and the child for their behavior. There are times when, and those are all considered, when, I can't say, I would never say that so, a lot of kids who get suspended are special needs kids. Okay, I would be very surprised if there are very many, because it's always a consideration. And if a child is in a serious situation behavior-wise, it means something needs to change in their programming and their services, in likelihood. So I would, I used to wonder about that myself years ago, and, and I would be extremely surprised if there were an issue with the special ed and the suspension issue.
Yeah, and I don't wanna speak to how the department does this, but it's some kind of a statistical analysis that they look at the general population, they look at the number of suspensions, they look at the students with IEPs, and they compare the...
And the IEP part of it, the specialized part of it, is a consideration in any school district as to should this child be suspended. Is that an appropriate appropriateness for this child? Or is there something else we need to be doing? I mean, I know the school districts all look at that type of thing.
Sure.
So I would never, I would not think that that's an issue when you're plucking the numbers from districts, especially ours.
Great, thank you Ellen. Do you have more?
No.
Is there any other questions for Brian? Alright, thank you Brian.
Thank you.
Alright, old business. So last board meeting, Ginny gave us a write-up of what was changed on the handbook, so tonight she's looking for approval. Does everybody have their sheet from last time? Do you have more to add?
I don't know. Everybody got copies of this last week? And if you have any questions or open to questions? If not, we would like to go ahead and get these accepted because they're looking to print them. So anybody have questions on?
I was gonna ask you if you wanna make that motion, I'll second it.
Does anybody have questions first?
I just had a question about the change in time for Glen Lake. Any thought to how that is gonna impact like drop-off traffic patterns? With it only being like a 15-minute window?
Yeah, the bus schedules, the buses are okay with it.
Okay.
I'm sure, do you wanna, I know you've looked into that Wendy.
So in speaking with Mrs. Stoyl, the majority of our students are dropped off during that timestamp anyways. They checked with not only our regular busing, but also our special ed busing to make sure that that was not going to be an issue. So we do not anticipate any problems with that shorter time, because what they're finding is most of the students are already in the classroom at that start time anyways. As a reminder, when you're looking at those new start and end times, it does not impact the amount of times that students are in instruction. We're keeping the same amount of time. What it does allow, in that having that shorter amount of time at the beginning of the day, is it allows more time in the middle of the day for the teachers to have lunch, an increase from a 25-minute planned period to a 40-minute planned period. And the afternoon timestamp does not change at all.
And it gives more structure in the beginning of the morning for those children. Instead of 45 minutes, getting ready and taking off coats and stuff, it gives them more structure and gets them started on their day. So it, it's a good, a good change.
I'd also mention that we did bring this proposal to GESS and GEA for their, for their thoughts as well, to make sure that they were okay with the change.
Thank you Wendy. Anyone else have any other questions for Ginny?
Okay, we have a motion, Ellen, are you?
I'll move we approve the handbooks as we've, as they've been presented.
Thank you Ellen. Do I have a second? I'll second. By Ginny. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
I'm going to abstain.
One abstention. Okay Denise, did you get that?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright, so questions and answers for first reads. So we had policies come to at the last meeting. Denise sent out an email that if you had questions, you let her know. We'll come back at the next meeting for second reads. I think only one person had a question, and it was answered. So we'll discuss them again on the 20th of February, unless anybody had something tonight. Alright, so moving on, staffing.
So for staffing, we have a couple of notifications for you. A track change for Sharice Salter, who is our nurse here at Goffstown High School, moving from Bachelor's 15 to Bachelor's 30, so congratulations to Sharice. Long-term substitute, Mrs. French, who is a wonderful retired special ed teacher. We're very pleased to have her continue to work with us. She will be covering a leave at Mountain View. And for your, for your approval this evening, we have an SSS nomination, which is our Student Support Services. This is Amanda Fowler, and this is as a registered behavioral technician. So we have that one, and we have a retirement. I'd like to announce retirement of Tim Micho, and I'd like to offer my congratulations to Mr. Micho, who's been a social studies teacher here for a long time.
Alright, anybody have any questions? If not, take a motion to accept.
Move to accept the, where am I at here? The SSS nomination?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
And retirement.
Do you want me to do it all of it? Okay, and the retirement?
Alright, thank you Ellen. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Okay, we're unanimous. And then the rest is not published.
Yeah, so we, we will have a conversation in non-public about hiring, but we'll do that, I think, after deliberative, probably makes sense at this point. It might be cutting it a little close. Yep.
Alright, is there other business that may legally come before the meeting?
Just for giggles.
Yeah.
We got 20 minutes. If we took five, then we still have another 20 minutes. It only takes five or 10 minutes to walk down the hall, or 15, we could start.
We sure could.
I don't mind if we start.
You wanna start non-public?
Yeah, 'cause after deliberative, it's, it's one of those, oh, you gotta come back to the meeting.
Okay.
I would love to start, and we could recess after we come out.
So we have two, and they're both under C, correct?
Alright, so I mean, a motion going to non-public under R.C. 91A 32C, matters which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Who's second? Dan? Alright, I'll do roll call. Greta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Caroline? Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Dan? Yes.
And Heather, yes. Alright, so we'll go down to...
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. All right, so we'll go down to...
Yep, we'll go down.
Her ability to separate the technology from what's best for students in learning, and regardless of what crazy idea we come at her with, she is always willing to work with us and make sure that students are at the forefront of the decisions that we're making. She is truly one of the most deserving individuals in this district for recognition, and I couldn't be happier for her. Congratulations.
Betsy, you are a remarkable database administrator. You have so many skills. The work that you do is so critically important with respect to our state reporting, federal reporting, our compliance reports for the Department of Education, all of our funding. Everything that you touch is mission critical. I extend to you my appreciation and just the recognition of you being a wonderful, wonderful member of the Goffstown community and such an incredible valued employee. Thank you so much, and congratulations to be this year's cornerstone award winner.
And the second award is given out to in recognition of outstanding dedication, commitment, and accomplishment. Oops. Restart. The Dream Keeper Award. I was going to give the same award out twice. The Dream Keeper Award is given to individuals or organizations outside of the school district that that can contribute to the education in this Goffstown School District. And we're very proud to be able to present this award to Senator Lou DeLisandro.
I'm Brian Balki, the very proud superintendent of schools, serving the communities of Goffstown and New Boston. Every year, the Goffstown School Board gives out two special awards. This year, the Dream Keeper Award is going to a very special member of our community. I'd like to announce this year's award winner of the Dream Keeper Award as Senator Lou DeLisandro. Senator DeLisandro has represented the town of Goffstown for 12 election cycles. That's 24 years. Two and a half decades he's been dedicated to the community of Goffstown. I'd like to thank the senator for all of his work, and in particular, every year he comes and tours the schools. I've had the pleasure of working with him for many, many years. I've watched him light up when he gets to talk to fourth graders about state government. And these fourth graders ask some tough questions. So it's been really a joy of mine to work with the senator. We thank you for your many years of dedicated service. This award is about service to the community. So this is not about partisan politics, whether someone's a Republican or a Democrat. This is truly just about dedication and service to the Goffstown community. And the school board would like to recognize and thank the senator for serving the Goffstown community for the last 24 years. I have a few people who'd like to offer their congratulations to you.
Hi, Lou. I've known you for well over 20 years. It's sad that you know, you are no longer our state senator due to redistricting, but you know, you are still a friend to the Goffstown community, no doubt. Endless questions that I've posed to you and your staff with regard to education issues, and every single time, you know, you've responded quickly and and with, you know, with the information that we need to make right decisions. So I wanted to wish you and Pat all the best of luck in the future, and hopefully you'll still come to the parades in Goffstown and will still march. So take care and good luck.
Dear friend, so deserving of this of this honor, so happy for you again, and thank you for all that you've done for years and years and years. So appreciate all your time, your tireless years of service, and a special thank you to your family because you've given so much of your time that you probably could have spent with your family, helping others throughout the many, many years of service. So congratulations, well deserved honor. Greatly appreciate all that you've done. Congratulations.
Hi, Lou. I just wanted to congratulate you on getting the Dream Keeper Award. It's amazing how you've been coming over to our school and teaching the kids all about how state government works and all about your role in state government and making sure that education is top priority in the town of Goffstown.
Senator DeLisandro, congratulations on this great honor. You are definitely the right person to have received this award. We appreciate it, and the students appreciate your commitment and your value. Congratulations and thank you, Senator.
On behalf of the Goffstown School Board, I would like to congratulate New Hampshire State Senator Lou DeLisandro as this year's recipient of the Dream Keeper Award.
Congratulations, Lou. This is Sarah. I really am proud that I know you, and your dedication to education has been unreal over the years. So congratulations, Lou.
Congratulations, Lou.
I'd like to offer my appreciation and congratulations to Senator DeLisandro and his wife, Pat. Thank you for your many years of service, and we'd like to send you off in a way that you're familiar with. So with that, Senator, we wish you a great
Great.
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 American day. Thank you and congratulations.
It's good to see you. One town official I was hiding in plain sight, and I miss is Kathy Ball, the town clerk. Now, as you know, the Goffstown School Elections and Town Elections are held together. The school moderator has responsibility for the school election, the town for the town side. Kathy, however, really runs everything and tells Rod and me what to do, puts rings in our noses and leads us around. And the efficiency of our town elections is really a model for the state. It's referred to by others. We represent a lot of towns and we hear about it, and that really is to the credit of Kathy. So thank you for coming. Okay, what are we doing here tonight? Most of you, many of you, most of you have probably heard this lecture. You can go out for Dunkin' Donuts for your cup of coffee while I repeat it, but I want to make sure everybody who's here, including new voters, understand the process of this meeting. Going back to the old days, traditional town meeting, oh, by the way, the long lecture, which several of you heard many years ago, is still available on the CD that will be on sale in the lobby at intermission, but I'll give you the short one. In the old days, under the town meeting, traditional town meeting, the meeting did three things on warrant articles. It discussed, it could amend, and then it voted. Three activities. When the town and the school district adopted what's called the Official Ballot Referendum System, known as SB 2, Senate Bill 2, in 1995, the effect was to separate the third of those activities, the voting. So voting now goes on the official ballot that you vote on on the traditional town meeting day of the second Tuesday in March. It's a written ballot. Leaving this meeting to do the first two of those activities. We discuss or debate, and you can amend, but we do not take a vote on the final warrant article. If this group does nothing, does not amend, the warrant article as presented goes on the ballot. We do not have to take an action to put it on the ballot. It goes there by, under the law. So we're just doing the first of those two functions. The voting for the town meeting, the official ballot, as they say, the second Tuesday in March every year, is just like when we have our state elections at the high school and at Bartlett Elementary School from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and that's really the the show that Kathy runs for us. So if we do nothing tonight, the articles will appear as presented on the warrant. If you vote to amend and approve the amendment, again, it's the amended version that goes on the warrant. If you do not amend, nothing happens. Okay. Raymond's Rules of Procedure. Again, that was sold, originally I called it Pledon Raymond's, but he's been sitting in the audience too long. We follow rules of civil discourse and politeness that's intended to promote discussion in a constructive way. So a few rules. One, if you want to speak, you have to come up to the microphones, but you have to wait to be recognized by the moderator. State your name, even if you think everybody knows you, they don't, or most of us will have forgotten you if you haven't spoken in the last two minutes. Use the microphone, even Brad Parkhurst with his iron lungs, he has to come up because we're recording this for the town. All comments are addressed to the moderator, me. You may not direct your comments to any individuals, any board members. If you ought to discuss something with a board member or some of somebody else, do that during the break while you're buying the CD. We will not allow comments on individuals or directed to individuals, and you may not criticize any individuals or their motives. We operate under the assumption that everybody cares about the well-being of Goffstown, even if they see how to achieve that well-being differently. Comments must relate to the subject matter of the warrant. If you have other issues to bring up for any number of things, do not, it's not, this is not the place to do it. We are discussing the warrant. And I'm going to try to limit the comments after the presentation to three minutes. Sometimes that's impossible. It's not a strict limit, but be brief, please. If you want to move for an amendment to a warrant article, when you're recognized, make the amendment, state the amendment orally. It has to be seconded, and then we're going to have you take a form from Denise and write it down for our records. Scope of amendments, or what may be amended, you cannot change the purpose of an expenditure warrant article. DRA will disallow it if we do that. And you cannot change a statute, I guess, cannot change a warrant article where the wording is dictated by statute. The operating budget is an example. You cannot eliminate or change the subject matter, and you cannot add a new subject matter to a warrant. To put it on the town side, if there were a warrant article to, let's say, buy a new fire truck, special warrant article, you could not amend that to add a dump truck. That's changing or adding a subject matter that's not in the warrant. We don't have dump trucks in the school, but that's an example. Okay, exceptions to the written motion, motion to restrict reconsideration, motion for other procedural matters, and Brad Parkhurst's motion at the end to adjourn. Let me explain the motion to restrict reconsideration. In the old days, under the town meeting, you'd have a long meeting, you'd vote on the dump truck early on, everybody would leave thinking the main thing is over, and at the end, the few people left would take, bring forward a motion to reconsider and change the vote on the dump truck or whatever it was. To prevent that, the statute allows a motion to restrict reconsideration to be made after we address a warrant article, not before. And if passed by this body, a warrant article once acted on cannot be brought back at this meeting. So it's, we can't do that late in the event. And so I will typically allow motions for reconsideration, and I hope some people are opposed to do that. Okay, procedure on the warrant, what we do. If you look at the warrant quickly, number one is election of officers. That has always gone on the official ballot. There's no action to be taken tonight, so we pass that over. When we go to the remaining articles, I will read in a very shortened form each warrant article unless somebody wants me to read the whole thing, but I, I hope not. I'll accept a motion to bring it forward for discussion. Fred?
I move to bring forward for discussion one article at a time.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we'll do one article at a time, yeah. Some towns will bunch them, it gets very confusing. We'll do one at a time. School board will bring, make a motion to bring it forward, the parliamentary procedure to put it on the floor in front of us. Then I will allow the school board to explain the article. I will allow the budget committee, if it has comments, to offer them, and then we open it to questions or comments from the public, from you. You all have voting cards. Have to find mine. Do not lose them. If we have to have a standing vote or a written vote, this is your key. This is how, this shows that you are a voter. We don't have to go through the checklist again. We tend to find these under the chairs at the end, and people tend to lose them. So hold onto them, and please throw them in the trash can when you leave. Okay, are there any questions? That's a lot of information crammed into a very abbreviated discussion. I don't want anybody to be confused about what we're doing here, what you're doing here today. Okay, seeing none, let's dive into it. Okay, as I said, Article 1, election of officers, we're going to pass over. There's no action to be taken at this meeting. Article 2, this is the general appropriation article. As I said, the wording is prescribed by the statute. Shall the Goffstown School District raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant article or other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth in the budget, blah, 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 for $52 million. I'm skipping some words. If people take, want me to read everything, I will. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $52,218,019, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the Goffstown School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40, colon, 13, to take up the issue. I'm going to let Scott Gross, when the opportunity arises, to explain the default budget and the math behind it. Okay, the school board, NC, voted eight to zero to recommend. The budget committee voted 14 to zero to recommend this warrant article. Jared, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move Article 2 to the floor.
JD, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so it's been brought to the forward floor. Are you speaking first? Okay, I recognize Jared Talbott to speak to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. Normally, I have a computer screen in front of me, but I'll do my best with some paper. As a moderator insisted, I don't read word for word from the slides. I do try to give the elevator speech to move us along as quickly as possible. So you're welcome. So our vision for our budget, we believe that a budget should have a vision as we move into the next year. Our vision for this budget is getting back to basics. We are coming out of COVID. We have come out of COVID. We want to return to normalcy within our school system. So we use that as our platform to put our budget together. Our district staffing, we tried to keep neutral. So what that means is we tried to attract and attain or retain qualified individuals in order to make sure that they support our staff, our students, and all other members of the community that is needed. We want to deploy the technology that is needed to support not only our faculty, but also our students and our parents. So schoolergy was a very big thing that we put in this year. That is something that we want to continue to emphasize as we move forward. Providing a safe and clean building, we could not be in these buildings without the great staff that we have. The custodians do an excellent job. For those parents that have students at Maple, you know exactly what I mean for what happened this weekend. And also maintain great communication with our parents, with our faculty, with our teachers, within the community as we move forward. Some of our priorities that we have for this fiscal cycle is we want to remain on our educational remediation and enrichment. We did notice during the COVID years that we did have some deficiencies. We continue to address those as we move forward. Mental health and social emotional learning is very important, especially implementation the signs of, I'm sorry, implementing the signs of suicide program we have within our school districts. Very important as we move forward. Emphasis on mathematics. As we came out of COVID, we did look at a lot of our testing. We did know that there was some remediation and some reduction that occurred within mathematics. We want to continue to focus on that to bring our students back up to where they ought to be within the program, within the schools. Mentorship program for new teachers was a very big thing. As you come into a new job, some of you might not have done it for quite some time, but we want to make sure that we implemented a mentorship program and continuing that. It's very important as new staff come in, somebody really knows the ropes, can teach them how to be efficient, really trying to reduce that learning cycle as we continue to move into the workforce, if you will. In implementing the district's emergency operation plan, hopefully we never have to really execute these, but we want to make sure that we continue to have an emergency operation plan as we move forward. For our budget, some other things that we had to take into note is continued use of our federal grants to support our student needs as well as those investments in our capital infrastructure. The schools, as we know, Bartlett, Maple, they're old, but they aren't obsolete. We have to continue to maintain those as we move forward. Acknowledging that we do have inflation and those pressures are things that we have to contend with, they are recognized within our budget, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Reallocation of resources. It was very important for our superintendent and the school board to try to remain staffing neutral. This means we had to be very agile with our faculty, moving some open recs that we had, moving them to other needs within the organization was something that we had to focus and look at as well. And our prior actuals may not be a good indicator for fiscal year 24 for our budget. As we know, our budgets for the last two years, our actuals have been off because of reduction in some of the services we had during COVID. So those actuals that we had for 2020, 2021, 2022 might not be great empirical evidence as we look at putting our budgets together. Something to note as we do look at this together as part of the presentation. So as the moderator said, our proposed operating budget for the 2023-2024 fiscal year is $52,512,180. If we look at this budget in our comparison for our current budget, you see it's made up of three items. It's made up of our general fund, often called our operating fund. It's also made out of food service and special revenue. Those second and third items are neutral, or we try to keep them neutral, but they are something we have to include in the warrant in addition to what we call fund ten at the budget committee, which is our operating budget. So that's where you get that $52,218,019 for our defaults and our proposed of $52,512,180. As you can see, the difference between our proposed and our default is very minute considering the overall budget that we have. The difference that we have is $294,161 is the difference, again, between our proposed and our default budgets. Our revenue projections that we have for the fiscal year is roughly $8 million coming from our local taxes. The state aid would be roughly $360,275. Federal grants would be in the amount of a little over $3 million. Our unused fund balance, so for those of you that do not remember, our unreserved fund balance is not something that the school board can hold on to. It is something that we have a contingency fund that we can move forward for the next year, but we cannot hold on to a fund balance. That must be given back. That is currently looking at roughly $2 million that we'd be giving back to the taxpayers for this budget. New Hampshire adequacy is in the amount of $7.5 million swept, and as one of our former state reps would say, this is the money that is retained locally but dictated to us by the state. So it's raised locally, it's held locally, but the state considers it, it's their money that they're giving to us, even though they really didn't do anything about it. And then our other funds that we have is our fund balance of $339,000 for a total revenue As we move forward, there's other revenues that we look at. The district typically looks at some of our IDA entitled grants as we move into some of, offsetting some of our expenditures. Those grants and those expenses are included in the gross appropriation that we have within our warrant and is offset by revenues with no impact to our tax rate. For FY '24, we are looking to continue to exhaust the ESAR funds that we have from the federal government. I do not recall what ESAR stands for. I do apologize at this point in time, but if somebody asks that question, we'll make sure that our superintendent pulls, comes up and answers that question for us. For the FY '23 district, these grant funds to support our elementary school, sped teachers, Bartlett, we just wanted to articulate some of the money that we used, that we received from the federal government through ESAR funds. SO3 funds will support our new math curriculum within the next year and offset the cost of our GHS game field renovation project that will include artificial service and lights with other funds coming from a local donor who was very gracious, and we thank that individual very much for giving us the money to support the new field that we will have. Moving on to our next slide, our New Hampshire state adequacy. We wanted to articulate to the community the great funding we get from the state. So our base adequacy in 2004 was $3,390 per pupil, and now, over 19 years later, almost 20 years, it is at $3,786. So that is the amount of money per pupil on average that we get from the state. As you see, our total state aid increased $1,111,836, or an average of $58,518 per year. New Hampshire residential property taxes do make up the greatest share of our school district revenues that we have here to, again, offset our expenses. Some of the demographic data, so why do we have to spend this money? Why is this money important? Why do we need it? So for our demographic data, we wanted to make sure that we articulated our special education as of October 1st, 2020. As you can see, the percentage of population of FY '23 is in that rightmost column. You will see that it is still pretty high. We have an estimated needs of 551 special ed students within our school system, which equates for what our total population is. Our enrollments as of October 1st of each year, you will see on this slide. I do want to notate, you will see reduction in 2019, I'm sorry, 2020 and 2021 at Glen Lake. For those of you that may not know, we have a great early education program here at Glen Lake. For those years, we didn't use role model students. Those were the students that if they were in pre-K, we could ensure that those role models would be admitted into the school system through a fee from the parents, and those role models would assist us with our special ed students in those grades. We did not do that during the COVID years, so you do see a reduction in at least those attendances at Glen Lake. But as you see, within 2022, this year, we had 188 students, and at Glen Lake, we're projected to have 220 students at Glen Lake through all of our programs. With Maple Lab, as you can see, we continue to increase. For 2022, we're at 524 students. We did have a dip in 2021, but we are projecting to have 559 students at Maple Lab. Bartlett, again, close to capacity, it did dip down, but we are looking at 200 students at our Bartlett schools, which is grades one through four. And Mountain View Middle School, as well as our high school, continues to be somewhat flat, but there is little deviations in those numbers from year to year. The point is that we have a bubble of students at our younger education level that may cause some concerns in future years, but we just want to present the facts as they were today to the group for this warrant article. Our projected class sizes, so this isn't a totality of the Our projected class sizes, so this isn't a totality of the grade, but these are the class sizes for the grade. As you can see, grades one through eight, we have at the Bartlett Maple School, as well as MVMS. These are the total students divided by the number of classes we can have. You can see what our total average students are per class within those grade systems at those schools. Who makes up our population and reduced, free and reduced students? So just as a note, I will read the first sentence here. It is very important. The percentage of students who participate in the free and reduced lunch program is critical to the district's state adequacy and federal grants opportunities. For the more people that we have enroll in our free and reduced lunch, the better or the greater amount of money we get from our agencies. So it is important for those parents to sign their kids up for free and reduced lunch if you qualify. Our cost per pupil information, if we move on to our next slide, as we can see, the Goffstown Elementary School cost per pupil is the 11th lowest out of 155 districts. And as you can see, the total cost of our pupils at the elementary school is $16,477. Now, if you remember, the state gives us how much money? 3,000 something? We have to make up the difference. But again, we are the 11th lowest out of 155 districts. For our middle school, we are the fourth lowest out of 62 districts. The cost on average per pupil at our middle school is $14,787, and we do list out, you know, we are less than the state average. Our high school cost per pupil on average is $16,765, which is the 10th lowest in 73 districts. So the important takeaway from this slide is we continue to have a great school system with great faculty, great teachers and great administrators and great support staff, and we are under the state average for our cost per pupils. What accounts for our budget increase? This is always a big one, and this is very important. So as we stated, there's no new proposed positions within this budget. There are several repurposed positions, so as somebody leaves, as somebody moves on, if that position needs to be repurposed to something greater, taking a social studies teacher, putting them to a science or STEM field teacher, as an example, there's always that, that activity that goes on. We try to have an agile staff in order to conduct that, but we have zero new positions within this budget. Special ed increases are out of district placements with 15% increase above the New Hampshire Education Department, and that includes transportation and under other vendor contracts. Last year, the voters approved salary and benefit obligations for our teachers for a four-year contract. That is now part of our default budget. Our health and insurance costs increased 11.5%. This is something that you'll see as well in the town, but this is a district line item, so when you look at the increase in cost, that does hit our district line, and you'll see that on a couple of slides coming up. Our utility costs, we know are increasing due to, again, inflation. Those utility costs such as electricity, propane, oil, all of those, we're budgeting to be higher. One note I do want to make is other districts look at those increases in commodities for propane, electricity and oil, and they market into their default budget at the same rate, or the same amount, just a higher rate. Our district does not do that. We make sure that we list these as new costs associated with inflation, and that is in our proposed budget. Tax impact to our general fund. Tax rates are only estimates and can vary greatly by increasing or decreasing in our revenues. As a reminder, tax rates are set by our select board, but we try to give, based on empirical evidence, Scott Gross, our administrator, has the best job he can to say, we think this is what the cost would be based on all other things being equal. We know that the town is undergoing an evaluation in 2023, which will impact our tax rates. The following slides depicts our actuals that have happened from prior years for empirical evidence versus what our estimated are. Again, estimated is our best guess. The GES support staff contract, which will be a separate warrant article, is looking at a tax rate increase of roughly 17 cents if it's passed, per 1,000. Exclusive or revenue fluctuations, for every 100,000 increased spending, we can expect that the tax rate will either be increased or decreased by six cents per 100,000 assessed value. Based on this, the 2022 Goffstown evaluation for all properties, again, those numbers may change once that evaluation is completed. So our estimated tax, or estimated tax rate against our empirical actual tax rate, as you can see, is 2019, our actual tax rate was $13.28 for fiscal year 2022. Our projected tax rate was $14.67. Our actual tax rate was $14.43. Based on this, we project our tax rate, all other things being equal, that our tax rate would be $15.59, and that our GSS contract, if it is approved, would increase by 17 cents. A school-by-school overview, this is a listing of our default spend by school, as well as our proposed spend by school. This does include the district line. The district line, as you can see, is $163,000, and as I mentioned earlier, this is because of an increase in that health and insurance cost that the state mandates. But all the others, the Bartlett, the Maple, the Glen Lake, MVMS, GHS, a majority of this is either due to sound systems that are needed or for those commodity increases that have occurred, electricity, propane, oil. So you do see the default, you do see the new spending, and you do see the differences associated with that at the schools' levels. Our default budget discussion, as we were stating, and as our moderator so eloquently put it, is based on our RSAs that we have to follow. It is also, there are included warrant articles pertaining to the operating budget and default budget, but all of our default budget is based on RSA. So our general fund proportion of the budget for FY 2022-2023, our current fiscal year, is $56,887,659. Our proposed operating budget is $48,424,496. For that increase of $1.5 million, again, that's this year versus the default for next year, and that's based on those contracts and other things that we have included and that must move forward according to RSA. Our proposed budget for next year is $48,718,657. Again, this is the operating budget for a difference of $1.8 million increase, but the key takeaway here, the difference between the proposed and the default is $294,161. If we move on to the default budget discussion, I don't think we need to rehash this, it was already mentioned, but our default budget calculation, again, includes our previously approved teacher contract wages and benefits. Those are a part of our default budget. One-time expenditures such as our Glen Lake cistern that we had inspected, that $10,000 that we paid for that cistern inspection, that is not something we can carry forward into the next default budget. That gets removed from our default budget. Our increases in propane and electricity costs are not part of the fault, as we articulated, it is part of our proposed budget. So those commodity increases are part of our proposed budget. SAU management assessment is part of our default budget as defined by our area agreement that was approved by the legislature, which is you. And the special education costs such as out-of-district placement, transportation are included in our default as mandated by law. So we've talked about costs, we've talked about enrollment, let's talk about student success. The outcome of why we do this. Bartlett, Maple and MVMS stats testing, what we can see here is our English learning, language arts, as well as our math, year over year. Where we are, we see that in 2020, no testing was conducted due to COVID. As we can see, after coming out of COVID, there were some dips in those items, specifically 2021, if we look at Bartlett math, before COVID, 57%. After COVID, or through COVID, I should say, in fiscal year 21, we're at 25%. We knew that we had to do some remediation, and we brought ourselves back up to 55%. Maple, you see along the same lines, we're gradually increasing our scores. COVID happens, that first year with COVID and hybrid, we see a drop, but again, we have remediation plans that we put in place, we continue to implement them to bring those scores back up. As well as MVMS, you can see a drop, not as much because for some reason, the middle school students, they did relatively well during our hybrid sessions, but again, we think that it could be a little bit higher. But these are the outputs of what our money goes into. Percentage of GHS students who met or exceed the New Hampshire College and Careers Readiness SAT benchmark for writing. So this is not math, this is just our writing scores that we had for 2018, 2019. We can see GHS, and unfortunately, it's black and white here, so I can't really make out the difference, but we do know GHS is always above the state. So we see that in 2018, 2019, 2021 and 2022. Again, no testing was done in 2020. So even though that we have a lower per pupil cost, we have better outcomes for our students. They are outperforming the state average. If we move on to the next slide, it's the same information except for mathematics. Again, GHS is continuing to put out a superior product for our students as it relates to the state averages. Some achievements that we've had here at GHS that are important, and I'm going to read these out, I don't want to insult people by reading them word for word, but these are important because this is hard work that staff and other members have put in. Some achievements at GHS, Justin Huff, our athletic director, was recognized with the Clyde W. Mahof, Mahofer, I guess I'm going to, thank you, by the New Hampshire ADA. Kurt McDermott was a Final Four nominee for New Hampshire Teacher of the Year, while over 100 teacher nominations throughout the state. Eight students represented GHS at the 2022 New Hampshire All-State Musical Festival. GHS Environment, Envirethon placed first in aquatics and forestry, and second in soils in our state competition. Future Business Leaders of America placed first overall in the State Leadership Conference. Twelve Goffstown High School students recognized for their work throughout the 2022 Scholastic Arts Awards, including Gold Key recipient Ella Skodary, I know I butchered that, I do apologize, for a photography entry. GHS basketball team was a First Division One State Championship game appearance that they had. I won't talk about the outcome of that, even though that most of us were there. Brody Reeves, Division State Two Championship Wrestling for the 121-pound weight class. Antonio Capos, Division Two Indoor Track Shot Put Champion. Peyton Strickland, Meat of Champions winner in discus for the spring track, all four divisions. U.S. First Robotics Team 501, a finalist at Week Zero, and won the Entrepreneurialship Award for the Greater Boston District Competition. Extensive Community Service, peer tutoring, Goffstown Cleanup Day, Bartlett Field Day, canned food drive, Veterans Breakfast and more. These are just some of our achievements that we had at GHS. Some of our other achievements at Mountain View Middle School. Boys B Soccer, Division Five State Runner-Ups. Girls B Volleyball, Division Three Semi-Finalists. Girls A Volleyball, Division One Semi-Finalists. Boys A Basketball, Division One Semi-Finalists. Girls B Basketball, Division Five Semi-Finalists. Wrestling, we had three athletes qualifying for the New England Meets of Champions. Girls Lacrosse, Division Three Semi-Finalists. Baseball, Division One Semi-Finalists. Eighteen of our students named to the District Festival for Outstanding Performance in Band, Orchestra and Chorus. New England Math League Contest, Grade Six, 19th out of 40 schools. Grade Seven, 19th out of 40 schools. Grade Eight, 14th out of 41 schools. 102 Grade Eight students eligible for Honors Dinner for achieving grades of A and B in grade seven and eight. Many community service projects like our canned food drive, holiday gift drive and others. Those were so many of our outstanding items that our students have put forward, and we have been greatly thankful for what the town is able to provide the schools. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Karen. While you digest those numbers of your quiz afterwards, let me explain default budget for some of you who don't know. In the old days, under the town meeting, school meeting system, we'd walk away with a final number, and you could debate and amend until you get one. Now, because what goes on this warrant, comes out of this meeting, rather, goes on the warrant, it could be defeated. If the voters of the town vote no on March 14th, you still need a budget. You can't have zero budget. So when the Official Ballot Act is passed, it created this system of a default budget. So if the voters vote no on the warrant article on March 14th, there still is a budget. It's called the default budget, and Scott can give you a tutorial on the math behind that. Some towns routinely vote down their warrant article. I don't recommend it. One of our neighboring towns, so they always have the default budget, but it's, the statute requires us to have it, that's why it's there. And if the alternative is, the school board can have a special meeting, but there's two remedies if the town votes no on the warrant article. Okay. Does anybody have any comments, questions on the operating budget? Yes. What I'm going to ask you to do is go to the microphone, state your name. You may ask a question, this is not Perry Mason cross-examination, I'm showing my age. We're not compelling anybody to answer, but after you've asked your questions, if the school board or somebody else wishes to answer, they may. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Melanie Renn from Hubert. I live at 23 College Road in Goffstown. I'm here as the Chair of the Budget Committee, and I actually would like to commend Superintendent Belkey and Mr. Gross, our representatives to the Budget Committee from the school board, who went through this entire process with us, who went line by line through this budget and showed us not only where the needs were with their candor about what needs to be done in our school system in order to keep the school safe for faculty, staff and students, especially students, but also what they hope to do and are holding back this year because they are aware of the situation that many families are in in Goffstown now because of rising costs. So I'd like to thank them for that and for their candor, and to, just to remind everyone here that the Budget Committee of 14 very distinct individuals with very distinct qualifications for what makes a good budget did come together after repeatedly hearing their words and then coming back to us and telling us that they heard ours as well. And we did recommend this 14 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Melanie. Are there any other questions on the operating budget? Seeing none, I will close the discussion on Article Two, and we will now move to Article Three.
Mr. Moderator, move to restrict reconsideration.
There's been a motion by Jared Talbot to restrict reconsideration. Is there a second?
No.
By Ginny McKinnon. Okay, all those in favor of restricting reconsideration of Article Two, which means we cannot bring it forward again tonight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, Article Three, Goffstown Support Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement. Shall the Goffstown School District vote to approve the cost items included in the Goffstown Educational Support Staff Unit, excuse me, four-year collective, I'm going to choke on this, not out of emotion, but out of cold. Excuse me. The four-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Goffstown School District and the Goffstown Department. Excuse me. The four-year collective bargaining agreement reached between the Goffstown School Board and the, I'll tell you what. Ellen, you make a motion. Bring this forward. Shane, do you second it? Kate, you're going to speak to this, please. Let me recover. Where is Kate?
Caught for a bit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Kate McGrath. I'm the Human Resources Director for the District, and I'll be presenting on the Goffstown Educational Support Staff Contract, the tentative agreement reached between the school board and the association. The Goffstown Support Staff Bargaining Unit is comprised of just over a hundred and sixty-three staff members. So we often talk in fractions, and that's not because we have half a people, but that comes down to our full-time equivalents. So we have a hundred and sixty-three point five full-time equivalents that are covered by this agreement. This bargaining unit is consistent of our administrative assistants within the buildings. So think of all the folks who are there to receive and support any stakeholders within our community who have needs within any of our buildings. Our principal's administrative assistants who provide that support, but also specifically support each of our administrators within each of our buildings. This unit also is comprised of all of our kitchen staff. So we have kitchen assistants. We have an assistant cook, and we have a head cook at each building, with the exception of Glen Lake, which does not have food service. And our maintenance and custodial folks are also part of this bargaining unit. And then lastly, the biggest piece of this bargaining unit are the paraprofessionals who support all of our student needs with IEPs. I'm going to go through the highlights of the agreement. Back in November, we reached a tentative agreement with the support staff, and the substantial details of the agreement include a four-year deal. We did some language modification, changing the employee classifications for seniority within the bargaining unit. So previously, I just mentioned to you that we have three different titles that fall within our kitchen staff. Right now, those kitchen staff, if they get promoted to associate cook or head cook, they lose their seniority within the bargaining unit. We've cleaned up the language so that now anybody within the kitchen staff will maintain seniority as they move through and get promoted within those positions. We also added language to clarify work on remote learning days. So one thing that we learned through COVID was that we were able to shift the learning environment for our students and that we could support them in different ways. But our support staff needed some additional language around what that looks like for them on their contracted workdays. So we provided clarifying language on that. And then we also did some cleanup around language surrounding posting open positions within the bargaining unit. In July of 2025, there will be a medical plan that's going to be eliminated by our health carrier, and so we added language to address that that plan would be eliminated and will need to come to an agreement of a replacement plan, since this agreement will be continuing on during that period of time. We also added language to provide our retirement benefit for staff if they do pass away while still in service. So this would still afford their family members the retirement benefit if they qualified for it, even if they pass away while in service. We also increased the longevity stipends. So this is for staff who have been with the district for seventeen or more years. And believe it or not, we have many wonderful employees who have given us all those years of service. So one of the elements of the compensation is that we did increase the longevity stipends for staff with seventeen or more years of service. The longevity also, just to give you an idea, addresses staff members who are at the top step of the grid. So when we think about the salary grid, and as staff move through with each years of experience, once they get to the top, their raises are smaller. And so longevity provides another opportunity to add to their raise as they move through years of service, all the way up to thirty-two-plus years of service. And believe it or not, we have folks who have been with us for thirty-two or more years. Okay, so the compensation, the main areas of compensation with the agreement, I just talked to you about longevity. So we did some grid reconfiguration through the proposed contract, and we did this in the goal of really achieving two things. Over the last several contracts, I just mentioned our top steppers who get the smallest of increases every year because they're at the top of the grid. We wanted to make sure that we were providing them with a reasonable and fair increase, considering the fact that their expenses continue to go up every year and their raises have been smaller than those expense increases. So we started by increasing the top of the grid by three and a quarter percent. Then what we did was, we wanted to make sure that each step within our grid was the same. And right now, currently, there's variation between steps. So we started by increasing the top step by three and a quarter percent, and then steps five through fifteen are two percent less as you go down the grid from that top step sixteen. And then we also felt it was really important to bring up the starting wages for these staff. So I'm sure you all read the newspaper, you watch the news, and you all understand the pressures employers are facing to hire good, qualified staff. And at this time, we're competing with Walmart, Dunkin' Donuts, hiring entry-level students at fifteen and more dollars an hour. So we really needed to focus on the beginning of the grid for our staff as well. So we did that by consolidating steps one through four to now be the starting rate at step five. In year two, the grid is increased by three point seven five percent, and we eliminated step one. So now those people making that same amount at the beginning is steps two through five. In year three, the grid will be increased by four percent with step one being eliminated. So it's now three, steps three through five, who are making the same at the beginning of the grid. And then in year four, the grid is increased by four percent, again, dropping off that bottom step. So steps four and five have the same dollar amount at higher. Excuse me. Just to give some context around the wages for these staff members. So on average, the current support staff, staff member makes just under twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So when we talk about three to four percent increases, we're talking about a group of individuals that is only making on average twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars a year. Again, we felt it was critically important to not only take care of the folks that are at the top of the step, who have had minimal increases over the last several contracts, but also to bring up starting wages for our new hires. So to give you an idea, our current starting wage ranges from twelve eighty-three an hour to seventeen twelve, depending on what the position is. And in the first year of this agreement, if it is approved, our lowest starting wage will be fifteen oh six an hour, and the highest starting wage would be twenty ten an hour. So this slide represents the year-by-year cost, which is also outlined on warrant article number three. And we are asking for your support passing a four-year agreement that averages right around three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars per year to support our support staff employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I hope Ginny slipped me a couple of cough drops. I hope that gets me through. Are there any questions on Article Three? Melanie, does Budget Committee have anything, any comments on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melanie Renn for Hubert again. And I would say that the Budget Committee, when this was brought forth to us, we were intensely aware of the need to attract qualified workers, and that this area had been behind in starting pay and hiring. So I would, based on our recommendation, fourteen to zero again, I would say that the Budget Committee was satisfied with the school board and the CBA's agreement in increasing the wages to bring it up to a living wage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on Article Three? Seeing none, I will close the discussion on Article Three and move to Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, motion to restrict Article Three.
Okay, Jared Talbot's made a motion to restrict reconsideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Shane? Okay, motions are made and seconded to restrict reconsideration of Article Three. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Article Four, the Facilities Capital Reserve Fund Deposit. Shall the Goffstown School District vote to raise and appropriate up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for deposit into the existing Facilities Capital Reserve Fund? This sum is to come from their June thirtieth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one. No new amount raised in taxation. Ready? Do you make the motion?
Yes, I motion to move the article forward.
Ginny?
I second.
Second. Jared, are you speaking to this?
Yes.
Okay, I'll recognize Jared Talbot.
Back again. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Capital Reserve Fund is something that was approved by the voters, I believe, in 2020, and we've continued through the graciousness of the town legislature to fund every year. The CRF is for existing facility assets. And even though it says it was established in twenty nineteen, I believe we started executing in 2020. The school district looks at our CIP, which is our Capital Improvement Plan that is approved in conjunction with the school district and the town on the planning board, I believe. And all of those items are looked at and staggered over a six-year cycle. There are currently seventy-one projects from the school system alone that totals six million dollars that have been reviewed by the planning board through CIP, and we have within that matrix of, which is an Excel spreadsheet, I believe, that's out on the SharePoint or the town sites. There are over seven hundred thousand dollars worth of CRF eligible projects for this coming year cycle that we're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. The CRF provides a funding source for all of our CRF eligible future projects. It is also used as a tool to match grants associated with some of the projects that we have. So this Capital Reserve Fund, again, is not, cannot be used for new capital within the school system. It must be as part of a replacement structure, if you will. If we look at our current uncommitted CRF balance that we have within our checking account, we are looking at a total of sixty-six thousand dollars as it stands today. And what you see on this slide is some of the goodwill that we have had of what the CRF has actually presented to us. We've updated gym locker rooms, partition walls, GHS bleachers. We've updated our rear stairs that we had here at GHS, a lighting retrofit project that we had within our school gyms. Again, this was a grant match, which is what the CRF was really designed for, so that we could ensure that we didn't bear the full brunt of those costs. Our middle school cistern that we had to have inspected and repairs done to it, which cost a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in 2022. Replacement of our GHS school board, and then currently we are looking at this room itself having a theater replacement, our seating, our flooring, our lighting, and other improvements, which is looking at three hundred thousand dollars from our funds, as well as other funds. Our GHS fire panel replacement is something that is needed and urgent process, is in process of being replaced, of forty-seven thousand dollars. And our Glen Lake boiler replacement, which was thirty-five thousand dollars, that is currently in process. So these are the items that we have used the CRF monies for. As we move forward into next year, we have roughly seven hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that have been approved by the planning board through CIP, but we are only asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With the additional sixty-six thousand, that means in the bank, we, if we were approved, we would have three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. As we look at what this would actually do for us, we are looking to replace roofing sections within Bartlett at a cost of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from our quotes. Locker room floors at our middle school, thirty-eight thousand dollars was our quote that we received. Our cafe tables at our middle school, fifty-two thousand dollars. The fire panel at the middle school of forty thousand dollars. In-building transformer at our middle school of a hundred and five thousand dollars. Replacing our district tractor that we need to really move around our snow, as well as other projects here, is eighty thousand dollars. This is a replacement, so we are not adding to add or have a new tractor. And replacing our heating controls at Maple and Bartlett, this is possibly going to be also grant-funded of two hundred thousand dollars. But as we can clearly see, even the school board, if we were gracious enough to get this money passed by the town legislature, we are still going to have to prioritize those items on our CIP that need to be done. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Jared, using some acronyms, we'll call it. CRF means Capital Reserve Fund. CIP is the Capital Improvements Program, which is administered by the planning board to look at capital needs. I don't know what other, what the acronyms or initials he threw out that anybody has any questions, or he sprinkled them throughout. Does anybody have any questions on Article Four? Chair, the moderator recognizes Mr. Platt.
As you notice, the Budget Committee recommendation was not unanimous. It was nine to five. I'm one of the five, and I want to state my reasons. I do not object to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would not have objected to the three hundred thousand initially proposed. What I do object to is that the funds are allocated with no specific purpose, whereas the town Capital Reserve Funds are always for a specific purpose. And so that the school board can move things around, and frankly, the three hundred thousand dollars for this auditorium, I don't see it. I think the chairs are in good shape. I noticed a little puckering in the back, but there's no tears. They're in good shape. The flooring is good shape. So I don't see the pressing need there with the money we spent for three hundred thousand dollars. That's one of the very few things I've found in working with a school that I think may need further explanation. Though I would say generally, they've done a tremendous job through the budget process. So this is only one particular item, and it's a philosophical difference. And they say, well, if we have a capital reserve for a specific purpose, we can't change it. Yes, you can. You do it by vote, like you're trying to do with Article Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions on Article Four? Seeing none, I will close the discussion on Article Four and move to Article Five.
Mr. Moderator, move to restrict reconsideration.
Yes, Talbot's made a motion to restrict reconsideration. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll put somebody over here. Ellen, Ellen Vermarkowitz. All those in favor of restricting reconsideration of Article Four, please, excuse me, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, Article Five. Dis, to, shall the Goffstown School District vote to discontinue the Bartlett Elementary School Capital Reserve Fund? Said funds and accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the Goffstown School District General Fund. Ellen, you made a motion to bring it forward. Caroline?
Second.
Second to bring forward. Jared, you going to address?
I guess Scott is.
Scott, oh, okay. The moderator recognizes. The moderator recognizes Scott Gross. The, what title are you using?
Business administrator.
Okay. Singer of the introductory song that he is.
When my swan song does happen, eventually it will, I do intend to sing before everybody. But anyway, so the school board allowed me to speak to Article number five because it's under $100 that's in this fund right now. So the Capital Reserve Fund for Bartlett was started in the early 2000s. I apologize for the XXs. But it was there, we put a modest addition on Bartlett. We also put in the front of it an administrative part, and there was also storage in the back. And at that particular time, the project was nearly complete. There was about, I don't know, $7,800 left in it. It sat in that, in a trust fund for well over a decade. I'm a trust, an alternate to the trustee of the trust funds. And what happened in this past year is we did a very comprehensive windows replacement project at both Bartlett and at Maple Avenue. We ran into some cost overages at both schools due to the presence of asbestos in the caulking of the old windows. And with that, we had some cost overruns, and the board decided to use the leftover monies in that fund, which at the time was under $8,000. And they withdrew that to go towards that. The timing of when that withdraw was, withdrawal was made left at the time $28.24. That number, just, I checked it tonight, it's now $33.17. So they're getting great interest at New Hampshire PETA. I will treat all of you to pizza market, maybe a couple of slices with what's left. Actually, that $33.17 will go into the town's general fund. So if this is supported by you and the community, the voters, and the Capital Reserve Fund is closed, the remaining amount, which will probably be like $38.12, you know, that will go towards the town's general fund. But in summary, we created it for that specific purpose. That specific purpose no longer exists, and rather than, we already have one that's comprehensive for the entire district, which is the one that was just talked about, the Capital Reserve Fund for Existing Capital Assets. It's much more comprehensive and allows the school to deal with issues that might happen year over year. So as Mr. Talbot alluded to, we had our fire panel died. We didn't budget for it, so we used the Capital Reserve Fund for that. Our boiler, we have two boilers at Glen Lake School. I'm looking at Principal Stoyl. One of those is in failure mode, so it allows us, you know, to do that. So it's a, it's a very, very important tool. Anytime funds do get expended from the Capital Reserve Fund, there are, it's typically multiple board agendas when that happens. So this is a housekeeping thing that has to happen. In order to close a cap, in order to create one, the voters have to create it. In order to close a Capital Reserve Fund, the voters have to approve the closure of it. So again, more housekeeping than anything. And again, the, the 30-some-odd dollars will go back to the general fund if the voters approve it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. As Scott said, the Capital Reserve statute has the formalities of creation and destruction. You have to vote to terminate it. That's what this is. Are there any other questions on, or comments on Article number five?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to add to what Mr. Gross said about the necessity for closing the fund. As the chair of the trustees of trust funds, I can say that this is absolutely a record-keeping closure that would help keep our registers clear and would also close out any responsibility that the school would have for that CRF. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on Article number five? Seeing none, I will close the discussion on Article number five. That brings us to the end of the articles. I will typically, Brad, not yet. We have recognized and--
Mr. Moderator, do you mind just making a motion to restrict?
Yes, there's been a motion made to restrict reconsideration of Article number five. Is there a second? Ellen seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carried. As I was saying, we have let Lou DeLisandro speak as our senator in the past. He is no longer our senator, as we're not in his district, but he is the recipient of the Dream Keepers Award. So as the recipient of the Dream Keepers Award, Lou, you may address this group with your usual short comments if you wish, if you wish to come forward. This may be your last opportunity, so. Yeah, if you want to bring the mic to him, to Lou.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I might say that for 24 years, it was an honor and a privilege to come here and listen to you, the old words of wisdom. They were, they are embossed in my brain, let me tell you that without, without exception. And to all who showed up, I congratulate you because it's a very important issue. You should be here. Education is the key to success for all of us. Done properly, funded properly, and looked after properly means that the community is not only favorable to education, but bears responsibility for the quality of education that's, that's produced. As I say, it's been an honor to work with the superintendent, to work with the principal of the, of the separate schools, and to see the community grow and prosper. And really, isn't that what life's all about? So to all of you, thanks for the honor of allowing me to serve you for 24 years. I'm still available. My office is still in the State House. You all have my phone number, 271-2117. Please take advantage of any situation that might arise. And to you, Mr. Moderator, thank you for the courtesy extended to me. And I want you all to have a great, great American day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In closing, I'd like to thank the school board and the Budget Committee for your work. Thank you, Denise and Fred, for being my assistants. I didn't need you, but you were here. And the staff of the, of our school district for helping us with this meeting. Now, your job is to come with your neighbors on March 14th to vote. Remember, we have to vote in the written ballot, so that's your next assignment. Please carry it out. Brad, do you have a motion to make?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.